Good evening, everybody. Sorry for the delay. Our EDA meeting, Economic Development Authority meeting, went a little bit longer tonight, but we're ready to go ahead and get started now. So the first thing I'd like to do is go ahead and call this meeting for Monday, August 24th, 2020, to order. And we'll start off by doing the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to go ahead and get a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Sullivan's move.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan.
Favela's second.
Thank you, Councilmember Favelas. Now, just to be clear, we have, if you guys received your packets this afternoon, answers to the questions for six Charlie, the bonding bill support resolution, our city administrator sent us the new resolution electronically. It should be with your questions that we had asked earlier today. So I think that's all taken care of. That's something that Councilmember Krogman had pointed out to our administrator. It's been taken care of. So with that said, we have a motion. We have a second. It's ready discussion in regards to the agenda. Here, none of our city administrator be kind enough to the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas?
Hi.
Councilmember Kirby?
Hi.
Councilmember Krogman?
Hi.
Councilmember Schleter?
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Hi.
And Mayor Hague.
Hi. Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. All items on a consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered a normal sequence. Tonight, we have four items on our consent agenda. Our city council meeting minutes for August 10th, 2020, dispersment approvals through August 24th, 2020, Joe Eagle Anderson adopt a park application, and the La Sure Lions Club requests. So any questions, concerns, thoughts, ideas regarding our consent agenda? Here, now entertain a motion to go ahead and approve tonight's consent agenda.
This is Krogman's move.
Thank you, sir.
Schleter's second.
That was Alashider. Thank you, Councilmember Schleter. Okay, any final discussion regarding the consent agenda? Here, none of our administrator be kind enough to go ahead and do roll call to approve tonight's consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas?
Hi.
Councilmember Kirby?
Hi.
Councilmember Krogman?
Hi.
Councilmember Schleter?
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Hi.
And Mayor Hague.
Hi. Okay, thank you. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to adjust the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting on the sheet provided and identify themselves by providing a name and address. I don't believe we have anybody according to our city administrator. Has that changed administrative approval?
No, but Mayor Hague, I haven't had anybody contact me. And I don't believe I see anybody raising their hand. We do have three people in attendance virtually, and nobody's raising their hand. So I would say there's, there's nobody for public comment tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. With that said, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion and to close public comment for tonight's meeting.
Favela's move.
Thank you.
Second was Sullivan.
Thank you. Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call, please, to close public comment?
Council, Councilmember Favelas?
Hi.
Councilmember Kirby?
Hi.
Councilmember Krogman?
Hi.
Councilmember Schleter?
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Hi.
And Mayor Hague.
Hi. We now move on to our regular agenda for tonight. First item on the docket is six Alpha, our WWTP update for August 2020. Administrator Krugel.
Mayor Hague, members of city council, what we'll have today is the August update for the wastewater treatment plant, provided by the Public Services Director, Rich Cachara. I'm thinking about maybe changing up the format a little bit with this and just sending out maybe monthly updates to city council via email, part of kind of a newsletter type thing about the wastewater treatment plant. There are quite a few questions that come up as far as dispersments go. So it's good, I think, that we continue to cover what's, what's going on there. But in general, it's, it's business as usual. And if it isn't, then we would, I would say, bring it back to council. So we could talk about that a little bit at the end of this and see what council prefers. But with that, I'll hand it over to the Public Services Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Director Cachara. How are you tonight, sir?
It appears, Rich, if you can hear us, you are self muted.
Sorry about that, Mayor and council. Is that better?
Yes, if you can hear you.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Director Cachara. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Some of you may have known, since the COVID pandemic started, the state of Minnesota sent out to do some wastewater studies, and the city of La Sura has been participating in that. We've got some rough data back, but we really don't have any comparative to go against it. It's, it's good data to get us a baseline moving forward. Next thing on, in the memo is, we had our annual MPCA compliance inspection. This was done virtually due to the COVID pandemic. So this was a little, not a little, this was very different for staff. Yeah, staff has never done a virtual inspection of our facility before. But seeing that everything went well, we will be getting a report and address any issues that are brought up in that report. Comprehensive CIP/CEP budget rates. Staff has begun working on all that. And I believe I, Administrator Krugel and myself have been talking that we will be bringing this to a work session. Correct me if I'm wrong, Administrator Krugel?
No, that's the plan. Once we get the preliminary levy looked at and adopted, we'll, we'll start the process of really going in, do a deep dive into the enterprise funds.
Thank you. At this point, we'll get to the pictures in the slide here. Kind of addresses the remaining items in the memo. The first item is the wet transfer pump. You see that? It's kind of, it's the item on the bottom of the yellow silo or the yellow cone. So that takes the wet cut, the wet cake that has come out of the centrifuge, and it pumps it up to the top of the dryer where the next pumps, the building B dosing pumps, those actually inject it into the dryer, kind of, we call it spaghetti noodles. They put those in the dryer so it can run through the dryer and get dried down to that 99% to meet the Class A exceptional quality bio-solids standards. The third picture there is the bio solids flow meter. This is a replacement of the original meter. So it's just, it's just about made its 15 year life expectancy. So it was due to be replaced. Administrator Krugel, if you could go to the next picture, next slide? So the first picture is the building C, which that is the, the ferrocrum doors, the ferro, is a very aggressive chemical. The original doors were not chemical resistant, and they were very, in very poor shape. Actually had problems operating at times. So those have been replaced this year. Building C RAS pump, this is the, their three pumps, they call them three RAS pumps, return activated sludge. One of them can actually be used as a RAS pump, waste activated sludge pump. So we have three of them here. All three have been either rebuilt or replaced in the last three years. So a little ahead of life schedule, but these pumps do a lot of work. RAS pumps tend to run 24/7. The speed they run is usually dictated by the flow coming into the wastewater plant. So they're usually running on a VFD up and down as per plant operations need. The last picture on the slide is the scum pump. It's the first rebuild we know of. So got right, right, pretty much right on the money there for the life expectancy. So we're hoping this will last us another 15 years. Next slide, please. First picture there you'll see is Aeration Basin 1, which is the north basin. If you're wondering what all those pretty green plants are, those are tomatoes. Tomato seeds do not break down. So when we take a clarifier, piece of equipment down like that, and there's tomato seeds in the sediment, you get a beautiful, healthy crop of really luscious tomatoes. So staff will begin taking that out, cleaning that up with the back truck, and then dumping it into the, into the septic receiving station, and then hauling all the debris, putting it in dumpsters to get hauled to a landfill. At that time, they'll go through all the air diffusers, all the lateral, the pipe work, everything, make sure everything's in good shape to go for another three to four, three to five years. Middle picture is clarifier three. That's the, what you see in the middle there is actually the chain and the gear reducer. And on the, I call on the top, it's the motor that drives it. Due to, I'm trying to be nice, previous conditions of the facilities, all those components have fused together. When the HVAC was not running correctly, those components all pretty well rusted together, and we're unable to maintain those and take those apart to maintain. So that's why they will be replaced when we have the clarifier down. So we can continue operations. The far picture on the right is the clarifier, or the, yeah, the clar, it's in the clarifiers, but it is a RAS gate. All three of those items, there's one in each clarifier. Each one of those does need to be replaced. They were in the CIP/CEP this year. We're pushing it till next year, hoping for better funding systems, and hopefully a better option, more cost affordable option to do that next year. Next slide, please. The first picture, that's just picture of building C roof. We had a roof assessment done of the water and wastewater facilities. This was performed by Schwickards, and building C was pretty good. Building B will require an investment next year by the city to maintain that roof to extend its life for a few more years. And that will be forthcoming when we have these workshops. The middle picture is a UPS. There has been a history of UPSs having failures. And so the new UPSs that, when we are replacing them as the age expire, they are putting redundant UPSs in with alarms. So it's a UPS and a UPS with an alarm. And this is one of the items staff, they don't open the cabinet and look every day, but that way, with the audible alarm, they can, they will be able to hear it from outside the cabinet if there's issues. And the last picture there is the Casa 22. That is the, I want to call it the waterway going from Elmwood up to Ferry. Their contractor was working on that today, getting that all cleaned out. So staff has put a lot of time in up there. There's a lot of pictures staff has up there. And it turning out to be a really good project. So I believe that's all I have. If there's any questions, I will do my best answer.
In regards to the, the RAS for the three clarifiers, you said that we're looking at pushing that, that particular CIP/CEP item onto our 2021 budget. That said, approximately how much money had we allocated for the 2020 budget that we'd be pushing into 2021? And was the reason to do that because we had other repairs that needed to be done within the wastewater treatment plant to, that needed to be expedited this year as opposed to future years? Maybe you could talk a little to that, Director Cachara?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hague. We had $20,000 in the CIP/CEP budget. With the COVID pandemic, we put on pause everything that we could put on pause. RAS gates were identified as one of those items that could be paused just to save money as usages in the enterprises' water, wastewater, electric have went down due to the COVID pandemic. And we're just trying to be financially conservative to get through this.
Okay. So, so members, anything you guys can come up with? In particular, I'm looking forward to hearing from Councilmember Favelas and Councilmember Sullivan, considering that they had spent an awful lot of time when this particular entity was known as Murph Park, and they know this facility pretty well. So gentlemen, if there's anything that you could bring up that would enlighten the rest of us that don't have your best knowledge of our wastewater treatment plant, that would be wonderful at this point.
Councilmember Favelas. Well, we're used to the, the battery backups having to be replaced. Saw plenty of those. We, we know all too well about the, about the beautiful crop of tomatoes that grow. We had, we had those issues too. Honestly, the, the pump, and it's at the end of its life and being rebuilt, we knew that these things were, were coming, coming up. So, no, I have nothing that's, that's, that we haven't already pretty much talked about previously. So what about you, Marv? What do you think?
I gotta concur with you, Johnny. I, I think everything that we seen tonight, there was no surprises. I mean, this is all stuff we've dealt with in the past.
The, the good news is, is that we're no longer sitting around a table trying to vote on it.
Yeah. Other council members, any questions, concerns, thoughts, ideas regarding the wastewater treatment in the report that was given tonight?
This is Councilmember Schleter. I was just wondering if Director, if Rich could comment more on the study that's being done with the University of Minnesota. What's that all entail?
Yes, Commissioner Schleter. So basically, it's a raw sample of the influent that comes into the wastewater plant. Because at the beginning of the COVID, they believe that they, there are traces of COVID still in wastewater, raw wastewater untreated that comes into the plant. And they were following up on a theory that if they could analyze it and see that, that the results grow, that possibly could be an indicator of a potential outbreak of COVID in a certain area.
Interesting. Has there been any, any information that, that the University of Minnesota has been able to provide that would indicate that that's something that they're concerned about here within Minnesota, or more in particular here in La Sura?
We haven't received any information that would make us concerned of anything. Like I said, they did give us some pre, pre-data from the very beginning, but without baseline comparisons of anywhere else. We, we have some data that we can look at, but without the comparative, without knowing real numbers from communities that did have outbreaks, we don't really have anything to compare the data to.
Anybody else have anything for Director Cachara?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Sullivan. Hey, Rich, do you know, so part of that license here, the permitting from the MPCA when we did that mediation, there was supposed to be a, I can't remember what it was called, a efficiency study or something with the plant? Do you know where that's at, or have we heard any communications on that?
Yes, we did hear from the state on that. They reached out to us, I believe it was late June, early July. We requested that we start this in the fall time after the Casa 22 projects started flowing down. So staff then can be, because there's a lot of data we have to get them. It's a lot of staff time digging up data, getting, you know, finding the O&amp;Ms for this, that, and the other, and getting all that data to it. So that will kick off this fall, and hopefully we have some late spring, summer for next year.
Perfect. Thanks, Rich.
Director Cachara, I have another question in regards to preventive maintenance. Are we, are we now, have we now enacted 100% preventive maintenance for our plant? Is that all underway now?
Excuse me, Mayor Hague. You asked if we've implemented preventive maintenance?
Correct.
Yes, yes, we do have PM schedule. All equipment is on it. We are working on, the only thing we don't have, it is not tied to our SCADA system as of yet, because our SCADA tracks the hours and usages on almost all the equipment at the wastewater plant. Those hourly readings do not go into the PM software by themselves, so then staff has to do some interfacing. So we are looking at how we can do, do that interfacing to more modernize, automate the system to notice us of PM work to do.
Thank you. Anybody else? As this is a non-action item, this is basically a brief to make sure that council was up to speed in regards to what's going on regarding our WWTP. I'd like to thank Director Cachara and Administrator Krugel for providing this information. It probably is a good idea to, you know, occasionally go ahead and make sure that city council's brought up to speed on what's going on, because this is one heck of an expensive plant to operate. And sure be nice to make sure that we try to stay ahead of any of the problems that could potentially develop down the road. So thank you very much for the presentation. Okay, so the next item on our docket is six Bravo, our kinetic capital lease item approval memo. Administrator Krugel.
Mayor Hague, members of city council, this is the, I believe, final payment for our kinetic lease agreement that we have with the kinetic leasing company. So there's a bunch of items on here that you'll see, a bunch of invoices and receipts and credit card statements, things of that nature. So this is the final. I'll, I'll kick it off to Rich, and he can kind of fill you in on the details.
Thank you. Director Cachara, welcome back again.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as Administrator Krugel stated, this is the final, final, final of the kinetic leasing program that the city council entered into, I believe it was early 2019, maybe even late 2018. But this is the remaining products, basically for the city hall work. There was work done at city hall, as many of you know, there was an office built. There was a remodel of the old storage room. There was a utility room turned into a server room that we also put HVAC in. There was also HVAC improvements done down in the police department to the evidence locker, to some of the critical areas down in the police station down there. So this, this improvement wasn't just one area, it was really spread out over the whole building. And I'll answer any questions if you got.
Anybody? There's that everybody's satisfied with what's been provided to us. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the execution of the payment request, form attached to this agenda item for dispersment to our vendor, Kinetic Leasing Incorporated.
Councilmember Krogman's move.
Thank you, sir.
Sullivan's second.
Thank you, sir. Any final discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do a roll call, please, to approve the execution of the payment to Kinetic Leasing for $28,911.67. Final payment.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas?
Hi.
Councilmember Kirby?
Hi.
Councilmember Krogman?
Hi.
Councilmember Schleter?
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Hi.
And Mayor Hague.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item on our docket is six Charlie, the bonding bill support resolution. And again, just a reminder, you do have the new resolution, as provided electronically, that came along with the answers to our questions previously. So you may want to refer to that during this discussion. Administrator Krugel.
Thank you, Mayor Hague. From time to time, we get emails from Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities or League of Minnesota Cities requesting that city council consider a resolution in support of legislative action generally that, that both, either one of those groups are pursuing. In this case, there's a resolution that was sent out to cities from greater, or Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, that is requesting that the Minnesota Legislature pass a bonding bill this September when they're called back, likely around September 13th, to, to consider funding that, that bill. The city of La Sura has multiple projects on this preferred project list, or PPL, for water infrastructure projects. So we have our water tower project, well number eight, and, and potential water treatment. What we do is we put them on this list, this, this PPL list, to get PFA, so Public Facilities Administration, or, yeah, Public Facilities Authority, funding. So PFA funding, similar to what we did with our wastewater treatment plant back when that was built in 2007, 8, that time period. So we're on this, this list. We haven't been approved for funding, but the bonding bill itself, and the amount of money that is, is approved with that bonding bill, will then allocate a certain amount of money for those PFA projects, which, if there's a bonding bill, let's pass, that's in, in, in addition to what is already allocated to the PFA, we have a good chance of getting our projects funded through that project or through that, those, that funding mechanism. As Mayor Hague alluded, the, the resolution that was included in the packet originally was the template resolution. What I sent out this, later this morning, or late this morning, was a resolution that included the project list you see on here, along with calling out Representative Vogel and Senator Dreheim specifically in the, in the now therefore be resolved clause. What we're looking for is for the city council to approve this resolution. And if it is approved by city council, we will then send it out to all of the individuals mentioned in the resolution. So we're looking for a motion to, to approve resolution R 2020-021, supporting of, support of bonding bill. I will entertain any questions.
I guess my question would be more for Councilmember Krogman. I know that you had taken considerable time going through his documents, sir. Does it meet your approval now with the necessary changes you had recommended, sir?
Yes, thank you. It, you know, this is not always going to get great results, but we're one of many cities that's going to go in with this. We have the, the power of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities organizing this for us. I think it's well, well worth our try. And, you know, they're going to get hung up on things at the legislature, but we, I think we need to put our best foot forward, and this is one way to do it. We have a voice, let's use it.
Does anybody have any questions at all regarding the bonding bill support resolution? Hearing done, then I'll entertain a motion to approve Romeo 2020-021, support of the bonding bill.
Krogman's move.
Sullivan's second.
Thank you. Is there any final discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to go ahead and do roll call to approve resolution Romeo 2020-021, support of the bonding bill?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas?
Hi.
Councilmember Kirby?
Hi.
Councilmember Krogman?
Hi.
Councilmember Schleter?
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Hi.
And Mayor Hague. And Mayor Hague. And Mayor Hague. Thank you. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, City Minister, this is councilmember Krugman. Is twenty-one, right, is twenty-one the right number? I vaguely recall we passed twenty and twenty-one. I could be mixing that up with the TIF numbers.
Yeah, I, I believe, I believe it is. I'll, we'll double check and if it, if it is twenty-two, we'll change that number. So it's in sequence.
The number's not critical at this point. Thank you.
Thanks.
I just want to make note of that here, that it could be Romeo twenty-two zero two-two, but we're going to check on that. Okay, thank you. Now we're on to our.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at the minutes from the last meeting. But let's double check it. Let's leave it at that. I think we're okay.
Okay. Next item on. Back of the six Delta, the twenty-twenty-one budget update. Administrator Krugel.
Mayor Hague, members of city council, uh, the intent of this, uh, session tonight, uh, there's no action requested. But what we're looking for is just to update the full city council on what a lot of the work the Personnel and Budget Committee has been doing regarding our general fund budget. Um, as you, uh, can remember, the majority of the first month and a half was dedicated to the community center. There was a lot of good work that came out of that, um, a lot of good conversations with the community about the La Sueur Community Center and, and just basically the tax contributions that go towards it. Um, what we have and what you'll, you'll see today is, uh, there's a couple of key items that we want to make sure city council is updated about. One of them, again, is the community center and the other is this Highway one sixty-nine tax abatement, uh, project that was approved in two thousand and six. Um, and, and we have, you know, just some, some, I'd say, uh, sound financial planning. We're trying to, to not get too far behind on that abatement project because it, it, it really did come to light this year. And we want to make sure that we're allocating the funds necessary to, to make that fund whole by the time we hit twenty-twenty-six. There are a few other things. I'll, I'll hand it off to Finance Director Zach Dowd. He can touch base and, and really this is an informal discussion. So if there's something that you want more information about, please just let us know. We can go into, uh, whatever, whatever depth you feel is, is required to get a good grasp of the knowledge. So, um, with that, I'll turn it over to the Finance Director Zach Dowd and we can get started and kind of give a recap on, uh, what, where we're at right now. Again, this is just for the general fund. Um, the enterprise, uh, aspects of the budget will, will come likely in late September, um, and into October.
Good evening, Director Dowd. How are you this evening, sir?
I think Zach is muted. Zach, you're muted.
Is that better? There you go. Good evening, Mayor Hague.
There it is.
I got, forget my videos. I'm going to mute myself. Um, so, uh, thank you, Mayor, and members of city council for allowing me to speak tonight. If you have any questions, let's stop and talk about them while, while it's relevant. I'm going to go pretty high level at the beginning and then we'll kind of get more detailed, uh, mostly related to that tax abatement, which, uh, City Administrator Krugel had previously mentioned. So summary in total, um, preliminary levy right now that we're looking at is about two point eight four seven million dollars. That is approximately an eight percent increase from twenty-twenty. Um, I will show you how that's broken down in the next slide. Uh, but I just wanted to give an update. That's kind of what we're looking at right now is specifically the levy at this point. Because that's the point that has to be adopted by the end of September. So, um, that should be adopted or that's planned to be adopted on September tenth, twenty-twenty, which is our next council meeting. Um, reminder that this is always set high. Um, we do this due to some estimated numbers that we don't know. So, um, city staff isn't informed about insurances that includes life insur, or life insurance, health insurance, uh, general liability insurance, dental insurance, workers' comp, and any other small changes that we may have or big change we may have with percentage increases of things that we can't control. So we always estimate those numbers high. Right now we have those numbers at ten percent. I don't think it will be ten percent, but if I guess low, then we have to move some money from other places in order to cover that, which doesn't help anything with the budget process. Um, but we can go down. So that is always a, a ceiling number for us. We set that. And then that's as high as we can go. Um, again, uh, city staff and with working with PBC, we have kind of set the eight percent as a, we'll start there, but our plan is to bring it down to a more reasonable level, somewhere around zero percent. That's what city staff is looking for, um, to do this year with the levy, is to keep it at zero percent, um, just knowing other areas within the city and, um, things that we need. So at this point, the key changes with that eight percent increase, again, some of these are taken care of within the eight percent. Some of them are outside of it so that we have some sort of, um, ceiling area we can move around if we need to at all. Key changes are, there's a contingency set to offset the six hundred thousand dollar deficit that the city, that the community center has within the City of La Sueur. Um, that is sixty thousand dollars every year for the next ten years. Uh, that is, again, that's just the extra line item that we put within the community center in the expenditure line items. So that we have that money set aside for putting away into our savings or our fund balance account is what we call it. So we can offset that six hundred thousand dollar deficit one year at a time. Um, this will be addressed every year moving forward, trying to get rid of the deficits that we have. It is slowly accumulated over years and then in twenty nineteen, we saw a large increase in the community center with that deficit, large increase, the deficit of that fund, um, mostly related to repairs and other, um, memberships and revenues being over, um, estimated or over, yeah, estimated is a good word. Um, so if those revenues aren't hit, then we have to pull other expenditures out. Well, if we already expended the money, then it's already gone. So that was a really hard thing for, um, the City of La Sueur to learn in twenty nineteen. And we have learned from that and we are trying to offset that one forward. There's also some key changes related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um, we're just taking precautions for expenditures, overestimating some of those, not knowing what's going to happen, being more conservative with our estimates for revenues, again, related to the continence or the, related to the community center specifically, but also within other areas of the, uh, city like the general fund, related to building permits or other licenses, so on and so forth, that we have to estimate every year for revenues and not knowing what we're going to get. We're taking a more, um, conservative approach this year versus a more aggressive approach to the revenues. Um, as you may know or may not know, that the levy is just a backend number. So how the levy works is if we take all the expenditures that we have, take all the revenues that are offset against those, the difference is then put to the levy. So if we increase expenditures, we either have to increase revenue some other, from another source or it comes from the levy. Uh, so that's how that, that backend game kind of works. So levy is just a backend number of what comes from all the expenditures and such. Uh, so if we reduce revenues, that means we have to increase levy to offset that. Also, a big change from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one that we're looking at from city staff and PBC is they changed from a step grade scale of pay to a performance pay scale or a performance pay model. What this is supposed to do, or this is what is intended to do is, um, basically, strive to have stellar employees or make our employees become more stellar employees to try to do the best that they possibly can and not just get by with the day-to-day activities of just maintaining their job. The step and grade scale was previously used by the city and for many, many years. If you were not on the top step of a certain grade, you automatically got a raise the next year as long as you basically passed your employee evaluation every year. Um, city staff has put in a, a robust, uh, performance pay, um, system that sets goals. There's also a scale of a one to a five that has to be met. Um, if you are below a three after all of the, there's about fifty questions or so that are answered in different areas of the city of how, you know, handling with customer service and how you do your job and so on and so forth. There's a robust, again, model that we use. Um, and if you don't average a three or above, you're considered basically not, you know, you're, you're not passing your employee evaluation. And we need to set a, I forget it what it's called, Jasper. Please remind me again.
Sorry, Zach. What were you, uh?
If they don't, if they don't have, if the employees don't have a three point O on their evaluation, they are given performance.
A performance improvement plan. So basically what steps they need to complete in order to, uh, get up to what the expectations are. And if they, if they don't, then we could take additional, um, disciplinary action if, if they don't meet it in the certain town timeline that is, uh, determined.
Right. Okay. Yeah. So if they don't meet that three point O, then they are not given that raise, basically is what this performance pay model is, is proposing. And, um, then the, the raise would go up from there as a three point O or a four point O. Um, there has not been an employee that's gotten a four point O in the city yet. So, uh, we're striving to get the best employees out of us, uh, as we can. So that's something to strive for. Um, the biggest thing that we're going to probably talk about tonight, the biggest change is going to be the funding of the tax abatement. I'm not going to go into detail because I'm going to go into it in a second. Go ahead.
Administrator Dow, or, I'm sorry, uh, Director Dowd, if you'd be kind enough to just remind everybody on council that, uh, going back to the step and grade scale, the perform most paid model, that's applicable to our non-union employees that were hamstrung because of the way our union contract language is written, uh, uh, those coal increases will continue for those individuals.
Sorry.
Just make sure everybody understands.
Yes, I did not expand on that. I apologize. Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, so this is our step and grade moving to a performance pay model is only for our twenty-two non-union employees. That does not include the I U O E employees, which are most of our public works and most of our water, wastewater, electric, um, folks. Um, and then it does not apply to our L E L S R, our police officers. Um, but this doesn't, this does apply to our twenty-two non-union members or non-union employees that we have at the city here that will be moving to the performance pay model, um, as, as quickly as we can. And then, um, we will try to get those into the unions as soon as be possible too, once we have all the other non-union employees in it. Thank you very much. Um, yeah, so another big thing, like I said, I'm not going to touch on the tax payment. I'll give a lot more details here in slides. Um, and then, uh, another big thing is the creation of an IT fund. So this is something that city staff had identified and we talked with the PBC and talked with, um, city council overall that we'd have a lot of expenditures coming out of one fund for anything that had to do with anything IT. Um, we had a data processing line item that we used that was for anything IT related. Um, what ended up happening is that the general fund or our main operating fund ended up taking a big, um, big brunt of that front of those IT expenditures. So what the city, what city staff has done is basically taken the money that was going to be for data processing or budgeted amount and made a s, one simple fund so that all IT expenses come out of one fund. And that way we can either bank money or a future IT project in that fund, or we can have money in out, from all funds allocated to that one individual fund, or basically just make transfers every year to fund the projects evenly versus having the general fund front that force. So that ends up to being roughly a hundred and ten thousand-ish dollars for the whole city after all funds. So it includes the electric and the water and the wastewater, along with the general fund, um, and then a little bit of the community center fund as well.
And to be clear on that, uh, to be clear on that, just to make sure that, uh, we all understand, this is a way to go ahead and bring monies from the enterprise funds, uh, that are also using these IT, uh, funds that, uh, you're looking to create, correct?
Correct, exactly. So like I said, the general.
So, so. Yeah, we're hitting, we're hitting the enterprise funds as well.
You got it. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Only a small portion was typically covered by the enterprise funds prior to this year. Um, with this creation of the IT fund, we'll be able to evenly access those or evenly transfer those from across the city, which would be the water, wastewater and electric funds specifically that could then help us out with those IT expenses. Otherwise, the last thing is being more conservative. Again, I kind of alluded to that with the COVID-nineteen pandemic. We're trying to be more conservative with our revenues just because we don't know what's going to happen next year and taking a very conservative approach is what city staff, um, myself and City Administrator Krugel has kind of used as a guiding force. So we'll talk about the levy next and how it breaks down for the next slide. So here's the kind of, uh, two-column, uh, show that I always, that I always use. Left column being the twenty-twenty budget. So the far left column is what that budget is used for. So it has always the base levy on the top, debt service, then the EDA levy and the three categories. Um, the twenty-twenty budget is broken on the far left column underneath the line. Twenty-twenty-one proposed budget is kind of in the second, tech column there, increase, decrease, and then the percentage change. Um, the big three things or big four things that you're probably looking at right away are how much increases are in the general fund, community center fund, capital improvement plan, Highway one sixty-nine abatement. Um, so those are the big things that have kind of changed. You know, this, um, being more conservative revenues and so on and so forth. I'll touch base on the general fund and the community center fund in a second. I have a slide for each one of those. But looking at the capital improvement plan, you're seeing a three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar decrease in the funding for that. That doesn't mean there's no money in the capital improvement plan for any of those projects that we may have for street projects, any other things that, um, were identified by the specifically general fund, um, expenditures. Those are typically public works, street stuff or fire. Um, those are the levy things that normally come into the, the CIP, CEP area or the capital improvement plan fund. That went down three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Um, it's netted out, if you see, second from the bottom line in the debt service area, there's a twenty-nineteen equipment lease. Um, this was changed by our auditors during the twenty-nineteen audit, that they, um, said that the equipment lease meets a GASB uh, forty, oh, I cannot remember the GASB off the top of my head, but it meets a GASB standard that I needed to move the money into a different fund to allocate for those based on a, um, bonded debt, since we have a lease over seven years. GASB thirty-four, there it is. See, I knew I'd remember it, um, which GASB is general accepted, um.
Accounting practices.
Yep, accounting standard practices. Yep. GASB standards. So we need to have those in, in order for the auditors to basically approve or, uh, to give us an unmodified opinion on our audit. So if you net the two forty, which is the increase in the twenty-nineteen equipment lease, and the three fifty-six decrease in the CIP, roughly about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars underfunding the CIP. Um, those dollars got basically moved to the Highway one sixty-nine abatement fund, um, which I want to mention now is basically a fund that was set up back in two thousand and six with the county for properties that are on top of the hill. Specifically, there's Cambria and Technopac, which are the two properties that are, um, have a tax abatement against them. What that means is that the county and the city dollars for those taxes that are paid every year are supposed to go into a fund for the next twenty years. It started in two thousand and six and is in two thousand and twenty-six. And they will be put into a fund for any improvements that are needed on top of the hill in and around Highway one sixty-nine and, uh, what is the other road? Forest Prairie Road? Is that the other road that's behind, uh, Cambria? So in and around there, that's what was designed with the tax payment. There was no exact boundary. All it was said was on top of the hill in, within City of La Sueur limits. So with that being said, those dollars are supposed to be put into a fund. What has happened is, is that over management turnover and very, very inadequate records, this has been forgotten about by the city portion. The county has still sent us money every year for the tax payment, so they are holding up their end of the deal. But the city had put in only a small portion of that, um, which ended up being around seven hundred thousand dollars of the required one point two five million at this point of the tax abatement into this fund. And if we do simple math on that, that's about five hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall by the city that needs to be make, made up over the next six, seven years of the tax abatement, if you want to look at it that way. Um, so every year we're supposed to put in a hundred thousand dollars of money into this abatement fund to be used in future purchases or future improvements up in that area. Um, right now, in order to offset the hundred thousand dollar increase that we have to do every year, we have to go above and beyond that because we're five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the hole. Uh, that would be the seventy thousand dollar increase from the hundred thousand dollars. Um, I can answer a lot more questions in a few slides because I have a bunch of facts on there, but I wanted to give kind of a quick, here's a, here's the reason why it's on there and then we'll talk in two slides, three slides maybe, about what exactly it means, what's going to happen in the future, specific to this abatement fund overall. Um, the other small.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Krugman. I'm assuming you're going to talk about the county contribution to that and how it's necessary for us to consider, contribute to get money back from the county.
You got it. Yep. I'll talk about that in a few slides.
Go ahead.
Uh, I know it's a lingering thing that everyone's on their mind, so I, I, I get it. Uh, so we'll touch base quickly on the loans. So we had a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar decrease in the Johnson Control Loan. That loan will fall off in twenty-twenty-two. That's just the last final payment of that Johnson Control Loan. So forty-four thousand dollars will finish up that loan. Um, fifty-one thousand dollar decrease in the, um, second line from the top on debt service. Um, that loan is no longer around. We finished that bond and, uh, it'll be next year, twenty-twenty-one, to make our final payments, a ten-year, just a refunding bond that we did. And we do not have to fund that in twenty-twenty-one because all the money has been collected at this point. The other big increase is that twenty seventeen AGO improvements bond. That was the first bond that Jasper and myself had set up in the city. Um, and that is the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase. We had backloaded that bond or back backfilled that bond. In order to wait for the Johnson control loan to fall off. So I worked out perfectly of how much the increase in the Johnson or the street improvement one was minus the Johnson control loan. Actually worked out perfectly of trying not to raise our debt service for this city overall and backloading that so that we could. Um, funded adequately without raising taxes, astronomical amount, which worked out perfectly. Um, total amount of dollars at the end is about an eight percent increase. Um, if you want to look at it, what it's going to mean for the typical tax payer, typical home within the city, that's on the right side of your screen now. Uh, typical average value of your twenty twenty-one home in the city of La Sura is two hundred and six thousand dollars. That did not change from twenty twenty, so there was a point. Two or point one percent change in tax capacity within the city this year. Which means your average home value did not change at all. Um, so fourteen ninety-nine is what this, this and then this is just the city portion. I'll make sure I know that. That is not your full taxes, I understand, but that is just the city portion. It does not include county. Or the school district or any other things that are on your property tax statement. Fourteen ninety-nine is what you would have paid in twenty twenty, sixteen seventeen is what you will pay in twenty twenty-one if the eight percent. Increase or levy increase is there. I don't expect that to be the case, but I just want to give the worst case scenario because again, we're setting a ceiling with this number. That's a hundred and eighteen dollar increase for the year. And that's again, so there's two, three columns to the right are all monthly. Uh, twenty twenty monthly pay will be a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month approximately. Twenty twenty-one would be a hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. So it's about a ten dollar increase every month. For an average value home of two hundred and six thousand dollars. Now I get there's bigger increases with the more value of your home, but we use the average home to kind of get up. Um, where we add kind of gauge of the city. So overall, about ten bucks a month is what we're looking at right now. Again, city staff is going to work to try to get that down to somewhere around zero would be our goal. Next slide, please. We'll talk about the general fund and a hundred and three thousand dollar increase in the taxes. Um, I tried to do my best to make this as big as possible. I know it can get really, really small because there's a lot of information on here. Um, a lot of it has to do with being more conservative, as you can see. Number one just says it's a backfill number, which is how I mentioned taxes earlier. Uh, number two and three are just being more conservative with our budgets, specifically with related permits. And then also based on previous year actuals for charges for services. We just haven't been charging as much as we normally do or haven't as in the past. So being more conservative with those revenues is going to help us overall with the levy and with our overall fund balance. Um, because as you, as you may remember, or from our twenty nineteen auto presentation by. Bergen KDB, we are below our fund balance policy currently within the general fund. And so we're trying to get that number up as fast as we possibly can to meet our forty percent minimum fund balance. Um, what that means is that we'd have forty percent of our. Dollars in the bank for us to cover forty percent of our expenditures next year at the beginning of the year. So all that's done is we take the budgeted expenditures, which you could see in the bottom of your page there is. Are the middle of the, middle of the total expenditure line item on the left-hand side of your screen. Two point six five eight, little more to your right there Jasper. Other way, other right, oh, other, there you go, right there, yep. Two point six five eight million is the budgeted expenditures. We take our fund balance number at the end of the year and divide it by that number, and if it equals forty percent, we're good to go. We're in the. Basically, we're in the black and we can say, yep, we're good to go. We can cover forty percent of our expenditures next year if we don't get any money. Until June, May or June-ish time period, which is typically how the general fund works. Funded by two main sources of revenue, taxes which come in May or June. And intergovernmental revenue, which is our LGA payment or local government aid payment, which comes in July. So those two are our main sources of revenue, so we have to be able to make it from January until May with our forty percent fund balance within the general fund. Number four, interest rates just are tanking like crazy lately. Um, last year at this time, I think we were over right around two percent interest rate we were earning within the city or just invest investments overall. Maybe two and a half percent if I invested, you know, in a good CD. Right now, we're at about point one five percent. So it's tanked ridiculously, but you know, I have to take consider that into the budget, so a thousand dollars, we're going to be lucky if we get there, but I'm going to be. Optimistic about twenty twenty-one. Um, number six. Um, and then, and I believe it was another, number six and number nine are kind of related. Uh, number six has to do mayor and council increased about four thousand dollars. That's a huge increase for for council. You're not really getting any more money. Um, what happened is there was a formula error within the form, within the document that was not. Properly budgeting for your salaries. That's about four thousand dollars. That has to do with a, I believe it was in twenty. Sixteen or twenty seventeen, there was a adopted increase to the council pay. It never got into the budget document after reviewing it this year, so I made sure we made that change and that's a. Oopsies on my part, I guess, not reviewing enough in in past documents, so. Um, I'll take that one for the team owns me. Um, number seven, moving IT expenditures. That again is related to that IT fund that I talked about earlier. Um, that's sixty-five thousand dollars out of the budget. Um, and again, it's not out of the budget. We're just moving it from the general fund into the IT fund, so that just reduces that one line item in administration. As you could see down in the transfers out area, you can see that there's a hundred and ten thousand dollar increase from the, from, um. Past or from, from in twenty twenty-one that was not there in the past. And that's number ten listed on your bar right, the right side there. That has to do with the IT fund, which is ninety thousand dollars. And the twenty thousand dollars is our portion of the fire department allocation. Um, that has to do with our funding portion of the fire department. So that a fire department is broken down and paid for by the townships around the city of La Sura and the remainder is the city of La Sura. That is one hundred percent based on fire calls and where they are at, whether that's within the city or within a township. So whatever those fire calls are, whatever those, wherever those are at. We take a three-year average of those, take the expenditure budget for the fire department. And say, here you go, that's going to be divided this way, and whatever the fire calls are, that's what they are. And our portion is the difference. So twenty thousand dollars is our portion of the difference to the fire department. Budget or fund this year. So that makes up the hundred and ten thousand dollar change from one year to the next. And that's not a increase from last year at all. It's just reallocated the money. Again, IT, we already had those planned in there. Number eight, uh, you see a decrease there of my time. I spent more time this year on utility billing. And utility issues, so I moved some of my salary based on my time spent. Into those enterprise funds to offset my time that's being spent there, which was all. After city minister Krul and I went through that, it was well worth my time to do that. Number nine is probably the biggest increase, eleven percent increase, especially on a million dollar budget. This has to do with increase in OT for our police officers. We are only budgeting about two thousand dollars of overtime. And we're at about twenty-five thousand bucks pretty easily every year, if not more than that, depending on personnel issues or personal things that we needed. And then a correction of salary budgeted for previous years. There was a negotiated contract that you, that the union information never got into the budget documents. That's the remainder of the increase there within the, uh, police department. Again, the two main things, um, moving IT expenditures around and then otherwise being more conservative with revenues are. Two of the main big things that are moved in the general fund. Any question on the general fund overall?
Zach, this is Krogman. May I speak, Mayor? Mayor?
Please go ahead. Yes, please.
Uh, the matter of union contracts and then non-union personnel. Um, Jasper and Zach, could you simply indicate we are currently obligated, of course. Understandably so and rightfully so with contracts with the union. How long do those extend? We have those three entities, if I remember right. We just did LE, we did the police recently. Why don't we just get people a picture of how long it will be before we can renegotiate those contracts? With any possibility of merit pay.
Yeah. Council member Krogman, this is administrator Krugel. I can address those. So the the sequencing of the performance pay aspect of our, of our pay plan. Um, twenty twenty-one will be the year we, we are implementing it for the non-union folks. Uh, the union contracts, both the LELS and the IUOE, LELS are our police, IUOE are our. Utility operators and public works folks. They both expire in twenty twenty-one. The idea is that we'll have one year under our belt for non-union folks using performance pay in twenty twenty-one. And then we'll be able to take some of the lessons learned and and revise it to. Really make sure it's refined where we can implement it in a union setting. Now, the union groups may or may not like the merit-based pay, uh, paid, performance pay plan is what I'll call it. Uh, it, it, we'll have to negotiate that into the contract. Um, typically what you see, and if you, you recall, you'll see something in there for. Um, a cola cost of living, uh, expense or allocation. Um, increase, you'll see a portion for that and then you'll see a, 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 a performance review increase or what we. Previously called a step increase, um, is what we typically have. It'll be a challenge, I'll admit, to, to get our union groups to agree to it because it kind of goes against the. A lot of the union models, which are heavily, uh, heavily favor seniority-based individuals. So, uh, or you know, it's it's seniority-based typically. Um, so they'd have to change that kind of basic model, um, for merit increases. So it'll be interesting. Um, bo- both of the groups understand. That this is coming. Um, they understand that we're going to have a conversation about it. And what I hope is that we can pitch it in twenty twenty-one when we're renegotiating the contracts. And and hopefully we can get them to agree to it.
Thank you.
Yep. No other question on the general fund. I'll move on to the community center fund. Um, this one's pretty easy in how the changes happen, but, um, a couple of the big things are. Um, number one, again, this is just a backfield number. Taxes are calculated based on all the expenditures minus all the other revenues. Um, all the revenues in, within this fund are memberships typically. And our programs that we are running or any of the revenues that we may get, um, specific to a certain area. Within the city or within the community center. And the big change that you're seeing there, you're seeing a three hundred and eleven thousand dollar drop in revenues. And about the same amount, um, drop in expenditures. That has to do with our community education. So the community education piece that was going through the city. That we would cut to the school district is going to cease in twenty twenty-one. School district is going to take over our contract with the current, um, software. And then they are going to maintain all of those community education revenues within that, within their. Um, budget and their revenues and expenditures. So. We will no longer have that expenditure line item, which was about four hundred thousand dollars. And we will no longer have that revenue source of about four hundred thousand dollars. So it just takes our whole budget and kind of lowers it down by even amount of four hundred grand. Um, the number three. This is a reorganization, so as you can see, there's a lot more expenditure line items than now in twenty twenty-one than there was in twenty twenty and previously. So everything was pretty much, um, broken out into either the outdoor pool or the general facility. If you look at this same thing last year that I would have given, it would have been broken down by personnel, utilities, supplies. Um, bond payments, so on and so forth, that might have been broken down in there. This year, what we're focusing on and what we're trying to move forward to twenty twenty-one is break it down by service center and say. How much does each service center cost us to run? And then we could figure out what areas of the community center we can focus our attention on or figure out how much it costs us to run that area. Um, and then we can also look at charges for services, which we have broken down and have a specific line item for each area that we collect revenue. So if we have an outdoor pool person or outdoor pool membership that we get on a daily pass. They goes and that goes into outdoor pool money. So I can take a look and say exactly outdoor pool made this amount of money, but it costs us this much money to run. And there we go. There's our percentage of how much our return on investment is. Um, then we can also also divvy up the tax levy and say, this is how much of the tax levy is going to fund this area versus that area. Um, city staff has identified that. PBC has been, um, all about trying to figure out what areas and what. What our service centers are and how much they cost because we didn't have those numbers before. And now with the new software and with, um, the assistant public service director, Rich Kachera and myself. City, city administrator Krugel were able to try to do those things, which is going to be very, very good. Um, number four, be more conservative on revenues again, just trying to be more fiscally responsible with how much we have in there. Um, the big change that I wanted to mention, um. For the community center overall is a sixty thousand dollar contingency that I had previously mentioned. It's basically a ten-year plan to try to get us out of the six hundred thousand dollar deficit. That is grouped into the general facility area of that budget, so that says two hundred and fifty-two thousand, which is the top line of that expenditure line item. Um, typically, general facility would be sixty thousand dollars less than that to operate, but the sixty thousand dollars has to go somewhere, so that is where I went is the general facility. Uh, location or service center of the community center. As you can see, the biggest thing change is a hundred thousand dollar increase in the taxes that are going to go to this. Um, funding this community center. That has to do with, again, more accurate numbers, be more conservative with revenues. And having more accurate reporting within our, um, software to help, help us, help the budget. And being much more real with numbers. Um, again, I always say that you could put any number into a budget that you want, but if you're not going to hit it, it's not really a budget. So that's kind of how it was run before was we just put a pretty number in there and make it look good, and then we just. Blow the budget out of the water and then we'd be way over budget. And that doesn't help, again, help anybody because then we can't plan for the future and that's how we end up with a six hundred thousand dollar deficit. So Rich Kachera, we had public service director, Rich Kachera and myself. City administrator Krugel, I've really worked really hard on trying to get this corrected and make it so we actually have real numbers. Um, which it helps greatly. So any questions in the community center overall? I know it's a big number increase. Uh, I know, I don't know, I don't remember a CIP offhand, city administrator Krugel, can you mention that at all? I don't remember CIP, CEP numbers that we were going to use.
Uh, yep, so I believe that we're going to try to keep the, the community center CIP between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars per year. If you remember, we deferred, um, some indoor pool items that we'll, we'll discuss more in detail as we get closer to the, uh, final levy. Um, uh, because I anticipate, um, you know, more conversation about the indoor pool as we get closer to that date. Um, I will note the indoor pool with this scenario that you see in front of you today is the preliminary levy. Has it opened only nine months out of the twelve? So when the outdoor pool is open, the indoor pool will be closed. Um, so, uh, but CIP, CEP numbers generally, we're going to try to, try to keep that around a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars a year for the community center. There's way more projects than that, but, uh, we're trying to, one, dig ourselves out of a deficit and two. Um, kind of dig ourselves out of this hole related to COVID nineteen and the potential loss of memberships. So we're, we're trying to be conservative and and not do, um, too much too quickly.
Any other questions on the community center? Thank you, city administrator Krugel. Appreciate that. Not hearing any. Okay, we'll go to the next one. Here's the big one of the night. Um, this is kind of my fact sheet that I put together for all the information that I could possibly find out about this abatement. Um, I didn't do a lot of research into this until it was mentioned by city administrator Krugel this year. And then I really started digging into it and finding out that we had a lot more, um. Things to look into than, uh, previously planned on. So the abatement was started in two thousand and six. It ends in twenty twenty-six. Um, the abatement is for the county and city dollars to be put into a fund at the city to be used for projects at, on, or near the hilltop of La Sura within city limits. Um, otherwise, the, uh, anticipated dollars remaining to collect are nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, just quite a bit. The anticipated dollars at the beginning of the abatement, about three million dollars. I previously mentioned that seven hundred thousand of the one point two five million of the city's portion has not, has been, has been paid in. Um, and the rest is to be paid in. And if the city does not contribute to the tax abatement, then, um, the county will be able, will then. Um, have all the money. So basically, all the money from the county is being put into this abatement. The city is not putting any in. If we cancel the abatement, which we are able to do at any point. Um, we will lose the county funding from this abatement fund. So this is an opportunity for the city to have some money overall. To, um, put some money away for a project on top of the hill or on or near hilltop of La Sura. Um, the current cash balance is four hundred thousand dollars. That has to do with the county portion. There has been two projects that have been paid for out of this abatement fund since it started. Um, both were back prior to twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen-ish era and prior. And one was the Cambria Avenue closing onto Highway one sixty-nine. And the other one was the Jade turnarounds on Highway one sixty-nine, which equaled those two projects are about a million dollars in total cost. So again, we got about three million dollars total that we could get at the beginning of this payment. Two million dollars basically remaining because we spent a million of it. Um, we're supposed to have about a million dollars in this fund overall, so total cash balance projected at the end of the abatement is about two million dollars. There's no limit on the type of project we can do, um, but it is limited if we stop doing this payment. There's no limit on the type of project we can do, um but it is limited if we stop doing this payment. We will lose the county funding for this um overall, so. Something that we need to keep putting into, at least that's in my opinion, and uh try to right the ship and. They put it towards the savings account so we can do a big project at the end or do a project in the near future. I will wait for any more questions that there are because there are probably going to be some.
Anybody have any questions for our finance director? Anybody?
I have a, I have a quick question. Uh, Director Dow, when was the last time we contributed to this abatement?
Um, I believe the last time we've contributed to this thing was in twenty seventeen. And that was related to the um two thousand and eight tax abatement bonds that we did for the Cambria Avenue closing. So we uh basically took out a bond in two thousand and eight for the closing of Cambria Avenue, paid for that over ten years. Twenty seventeen was the last time we contributed to that. And once the bond was done, in my impression or under my understanding, was that we were no longer going to be able to levy for that bond because it was paid off. So I canceled the lev- the levy on that area, not understanding that that money needed to be moved back to the abatement. However, it wasn't a hundred thousand dollars, it was only around fifty grand a year.
So at the end of twenty twenty-six, we we as a city need to have one point two five. Uh, in that account.
Um, nope, so one point two five million is what we should have put in there so far. So that's basically our portion since two thousand and six to now, how much we should have put in there. Um, our funding, that basically seven hundred thousand dollars went towards part of the Jade Turn around, but most of it was for the Cambria Avenue closings. So that's our seven hundred thousand dollar portion was funding that bond, basically levy for that bond like we would any other bond. But again, there was no money ever put into specific the tax abatement. Um, fund, ever, really. I mean, there's maybe at the beginning of two thousand and six or so, but that's it. And there was no ever, there was no levy or put in there, so that will I was never brought up under my uh. No management, it was never brought to my attention is because we never levied for those dollars ever. We would just get a tax payment check from this county every year. And I figured that it was just a tax abatement for the county, so I just put that into that specific fund that was noted there. I was not under the impression that it was a city and county tax abatement.
Okay.
That was a good question. Thank you very much. I think I appreciate.
Any questions?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Krogman. Uh, Zach, your second to last bullet on the page, it's on the screen, I think the answer is. Councilmember Kirby's question, isn't it? If the cash, at the end of twenty twenty-six, if we continue. Based on our contributions and that we get from the county for the tax abatement, we would have over two million dollars in that fund.
That is correct, yep. That is correct.
That's a significant amount for us to be able to develop areas on the top of the hill. And I I have one other question. Jasper, if we were to annex any property in that general area, would this also apply to that area that's annexed? Or do we not know that?
We'd have to get it, this is, this is Administrator Krugel, we'd have to get an opinion. Um, as as Finance Director Dowd indicated, the language, and you can see it, I I I sent out the actual resolutions that are related to the abatement. The language is fairly vague. Um, you know, it's, it doesn't give a specific area or, you know, meets and bounds or parcel IDs that this work can be done on. Um, right now, I would say that it 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 probably would be limited to something within the corporate limits of the city of La Sure. Um, but we'd have to get an opinion if there was something else, maybe uh a little bit. Uh, farther to the north or something like that, that's outside of the city limits. We'd have to take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not hearing any more questions, so yeah, I'm, I guess.
Anybody else? Any questions?
Yeah, City, City Administrator Krugel and myself would just kind of stand for any questions that you may have about the entire budget. Any concerns, complaints, questions overall. Um, this again, has no action tonight. This is just looking for direction basically for our September tenth meeting. Thank you.
I got, I got one more quick question, uh Director Dow, Sean Kirby again. Um, on the overall budget, the twenty twenty-one budget, we're looking at a pretty. What word would we use? Probably a liberal eight point one percent increase. Where were we at a year ago at this time? What were we looking at?
I believe it was, yep, I believe at this point in preliminary budgets, I don't, I don't have the document in front of me, so don't quote me exactly, but I believe it was at ten percent when we started last year. Uh, ten or eleven percent. Um, City Minister Krugel, do you remember exactly?
Uh, I don't know exactly, but I think you're generally right. It was, it was around ten percent.
Thank you.